I would like to call a regular Board of Education meeting on September 24th. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, and liberally and just as strong.
Roll call, Kelly.
Scotty.
Here.
Mr. Caslayo.
Here.
Ms. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Rukaski.
Here.
Ms. Stadler.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Ms. Huer.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Our exits, Matt.
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals and the board is expected to return 15 minutes after we adjourn to the executive session. That was a bunch of people. Who won that? Kristen?
No, my favorite.
I gave you credit, Kristen. Comments or questions?
I would weigh down here, so.
All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Motion carried, nine zero. Board move back 15 minutes. Right, if we could please rise for a moment of silence for Peter Ramuno Jr., retired principal at Sargent Elementary School, and Nabel Elizabeth Carrato, who's a retired cafeteria manager. Thank you. We have a workshop tonight, so it's a security audit update, and I believe it's going to be Dr. Wainball and Mr. Mark Thomas.
Okay, we have a short presentation tonight. We just want to update you on aspects of the audit, things that we have already put into place, things that we're working to put into place. I'm really pleased to have Mr. Thomas joining me tonight for this presentation. You're in week number three as our Director of Security, and Mark is sort of everywhere all at once. He has superpowers, and so he's in our buildings on a frequent basis, really helping principals out, both with proactive things, but also things we need help with in the moment, and has really been off to a strong start. So the first thing we're just going to talk about is just briefly this audit that happened last spring. It was very thorough. It's conducted on site. People from Altaris, actually Mark being at that point one of our senior security monitors, joined Altaris for almost every single one of the building audits. So they visited every single one of our buildings while students were in the building. They were able to be there during the school day, and they were able to see some of our drills as they took place. And they were also not only sort of looked at behavior in the buildings in terms of from a safety standpoint, looked at our procedures and whatnot, but they also looked at our the physical building and made some recommendations there. So some things that started to be in place last spring and are ongoing. The first one is that we, every building has a building emergency response team, and last spring as part of the initial steps of working with Altaris, they did a full-day training for every member of those teams in every one of our buildings. Mark sat in on all of those trainings, and he was just going to provide a brief update on what those trainings look like.
Basically, we also had these flip charts today. They gave me the quote, the simple six for every emergency that you may encounter in the buildings. It's your fire drills, your lockdown drills, your lockouts, shelter in place, and an all-call. So it basically went over what to do if one of these situations needed to be done, on how to handle a lockdown, what the difference between lockdown, lockout, and all the procedures with that. We dealt with just the building emergency response team for that, so they were on board, so then they could put it out if people started asking questions. Most of everybody was on point on doing, on the drills, on what was supposed to be done. There was some tweaking being done on it. And then also with evacuation drills of trying to get a center area where a lot of the schools were just going out, which is what the old way where the fire drills, just get out of the building. Well, now you have where if you have to reunification, or you have to leave the building because now the building is unoccupied, if you've got people all around, it's hard to get that communicated into one area and then have the bus company or whoever we're going to do to get to other schools or reunification. So that's what we did, and we started making that into it to where we could get everybody at least in one or two spots. Of course, the elementary schools are a little bit easier. Some were a little bit difficult because where the elementary schools were at, and so we're still doing that just to make sure that when we do the evacuation drills that we're all in one, so it makes things easier. A lot of, with the fire drill before in the past was, you know, get out of the building, the fire code, get out of the building, that was it, and there was nothing going beyond that. So we started doing that with that. And the lockdowns that we watched, they did some lockdown drills and made sure everybody was in a safe area. Some classrooms weren't viable for a safe area, so we had to make some adjustments. Safe area, just so you know, is just so if someone looks in, they can't see anybody in that classroom. So we had to make some of that. The other stuff was all pretty much had already been doing because we already had a different book, this one. The older book that we had was, had a lot more into it, and Altaris recommendation was try to keep it as simple as possible because if you're in that situation, it's a high stress, and people can look at it and do the quick flip charts to go through and what they're supposed to be doing.
So when I did a background on Altaris before we established this relationship, one of the things I heard from administrators and teachers in other districts they worked with was this training was highly valued, and so it was the first time that our building emergency response teams had this training at such a kind of a significant level. And so that was, I think, a really key part of our relationship with them. Something that isn't related to Altaris, but is a big part of being safe in our buildings, is Mark Thomas, I guess now two summers ago, and Joe Galbo, another one of our senior security monitors, took the initiative to be trained to be trainers in Handle With Care, which is a de-escalation program. And they have, they have been doing that for the security staff in our buildings, but also other key people in the buildings, principals, some of our parent professionals, some of our teachers, and our mental health staff as well. So they do that sometimes during the school day, sometimes they do it on, you know, professional learning day, sometimes it's after school. And Mark, maybe you could just share a brief overview of what happens with Handle With Care?
Handle With Care is a de-escalation program and a possible restraint. Basically, if we ever had to put hands on a smaller student, any student, to where we have the de-escalation, be able to talk it down, get it back down, but if it does become where it may become physical or something like that, I'm not sure the guy's name, it came up, was about basically that you restrain him without hurting him. In the old days, grab onto him, tackle him, all this. This is a way of controlling the child in a manner that, and I was pretty amazed at it when the first time I had to use it myself for a smaller child, they do have that burst of energy that they're getting out, whatever the problem may be, and it's kind of a hugging thing, but after that, it's, the kid is relaxed and it's calm and everything. So it's just so that the kid, the child doesn't hurt themselves. They do have, you know, they're having them issues, a child in crisis, to where they may hurt themselves. So it's kind of along them lines. I think it was very good, and a de-escalation of having to talk with the people and see what, you know, where that's coming and how to bring them back down before it gets to that situation. Well, it was very, I thought was very helpful.
Yeah, the buildings have really received this training very positively, and again, a lot of the focus is also on that verbal de-escalation that we all need to be skilled in. Another thing, and this is just sort of an ongoing thing with this new position, I mentioned that Mark is ever-present in our buildings. He visits every single one of our schools every single day. A big part of his visits to the schools is working with our security staff. As I've talked about in the past, you know, every principal was sort of the supervisor, but yet there is a lot of, you know, differences between the buildings, and so we're trying to bring some of that unity. So part of what Mark is doing is just kind of ongoing stuff, like focusing on professionalism, focusing on how to talk with visitors, how to talk with students, how to talk with staff. Again, not that we are having major problems, but just to try to bring some consistency amongst that staff across all of our buildings. And like I said, it's been a great start to the position. So these are some things that came from our audit that we want to just kind of highlight. These are actions that are, have been taken. So we all, before the audit, we all had ID badges, but what came out of the audit was that in some of our buildings, we were 100% compliant with that. Every single staff member was wearing their badge. In a couple of our buildings, that was not the case for whatever reason. And so we put a huge effort this beginning of the school year. We have these fancy lanyards now, and so every, we're not forcing people to do the lanyards. They can pin it to their clothes, but we're going for obviously 100% with this, and we've been successful so far. We've also created with the same lanyards, green lanyards for our visitors at every one of our buildings. Part of what Mark, part of what Altaris recommended, but Mark's helped bring, is consistency with how we, how we work with visitors too. And so part of it is just like what each visitor wears a green lanyard with a visitor's badge. I know these things seem really simple, but the audit helped us get it all into place. What came out in the audit, part of the, cool part of the audit is Altaris talks to people in the building, and they also look, and so they realize that through our buildings, we needed extra, you know, not extra, but additional doors with card swipes for staff. So we had key card entries added to Forestal, to Glenham, and to Rombaut, and that was based on staff input. Mark has been really good working with Altaris to make sure that every school has one of these emergency flip charts. Again, sounds seems really basic, but when you are in that emergency, and I'm not like a, an expert on, you know, the psychological reaction in emergency, but what I do know is when you have that thing in front of you, you start to go into autopilot, and part of the training is you start working through what it, what's on this card. And so it tells people, this is what you do in a lockdown, this is what you do in an evacuation, et cetera, et cetera. It's really easy to read, it's in all of our buildings, and it's kind of that go-to thing if people, it's a human reaction to sort of freeze, and so it helps people get out of that. Another thing that came out, and this is sort of a, could be part of a bigger project, but we did a fix this summer. Another thing that came out of the audit is the PA system at Rombaut was not universal throughout the building. There's a couple parts where folks had trouble hearing it. That's obviously not great, so we fixed that over the summer. This is another one where, again, it seems simple, but last year I was using one emergency notification system, Blackboard, and the principals were using a different one. This year we're unified. Probably the public isn't seeing the difference, but the administrators are all using one I was using last year. What's great about that is there's an app, so you can, you can do your emergency notification basically from anywhere. And so in the past, the principals didn't have quite that level of access. Another thing they recommended in, excuse me, in the audit was that we have some scripted, some scripted messages just already loaded, just in case it was really a sort of a, like a time issue with the emergency happening, so we're in the process of loading those sort of scripted messages, and those are just, just sort of in case. Thing I want Mark to kind of explain, we've upgraded our radio system, so all of our principals, all of our administrators, all of our security staff have, have, we, this was something that we worked on last year, has a new radio system, but we're tying it in with BPD and Town of Fishkill PD.
The radio system is from NICOMCO. It allows now district-wide all the schools to talk to each other. We just had them all reprogrammed because when they first reprogrammed, it was just like the middle school and the high school could speak together, the radio was at the elementary, could only speak to each, you know, the principal and the security staff there. So now we reprogrammed them also that as security administrators can speak throughout the district. That's transportation, all the schools and the security and everything in all the buildings. So now that wraps everything up. So if you, again, if we do have an emergency and if Glenham gets transferred over to here for whatever reason, they can talk to the security staff and administrators can talk now also via radio. When we had that hurricane or tornado rip through here last year during the voting time, that was the only communication that was up. Myself and Anthony D'Amato were able to get them radios and still communicate. So it was, it was huge having that type of communication, and the radio weren't actually programmed at the beginning to communicate to everybody. They had the capabilities, but they weren't using the capabilities. We've also came into agreement with the Town of Fishkill and Beacon Police Department to have, they have it monitored now. They can, they have just a station channel for them, so if there was an actual emergency, something like that, or even worse, where we couldn't get to a radio or a phone, or a phone, we could be able to call them directly. Only certain, they wanted a limited to not everybody having that, only people with maybe prior law enforcement or the administrator, just so they know it's not being called for a loose dog on the property. So it's something for an emergency. But right now, they're putting them stations in at the PDs. We already have them programmed on radio, so once they're up and running, we'll be having contact with the PDs.
Just a question, from your law enforcement perspective, what difference would that, something like that mean?
There's a lot of radio protocol prior, no one has it, is, a lot of people don't know how to speak on that, and in an emergency situation, you don't want to be saying the wrong things, you want to be saying quick and precise if some people get on there and start, you know, keep going and an emergency's going on. It's just the radio etiquette, not that people can't be trained, but they didn't want just anybody.
Oh, no, I meant just having the system.
I'm sorry?
I meant just having the system.
Just having it? I missed a question, I'm sorry.
I'm saying from your perspective, like what, what does that help alleviate? Like having that system set up, does it shorten times, does it help communication?
Again, these radios are up for the communication. Again, if you're out somewhere, you don't have your cell phone or something like that, if someone with a security guard sees something, they're doing outside perimeter search, and they see something, an emergency, if there was an intruder coming, if it was something that dangerous, you know, trying to call 911 and everything like that, they could have them right on the radio, have the PD on the radio. It's only for an emergency, it's kind of like a backup in case something like just that hurricane coming through here. We had, I was trying to call the police department, both Fishkill and Beacon, that all the communications was down. But if I had that on the radio, me and Anthony would be able to talk, but that's that same radio, they would have them up. They have the backups for those emergency radios where our, our communications were shot.
These are some things we're working towards implementation on. One of the recommendations from the audit is, and in the audit they talk about, this is a research-based solution, that this really works in districts, is an anonymous reporting system for threats and basically other concerns that people have. So what we're doing, we're working with Blackboard right now. They are our messaging software that we use on our website, and they do have one, so we're working with them to get it set up for our website. And it's, we're, right now, we're pretty certain it's part of the whole package of what we already have. So I had something like this in a previous district, and you do get, people sometimes feel more comfortable reporting something this way than they do writing an email or calling. So it's just one other way to have that in place. Our hope is to have that in place in October, some point in October soon. Another part, and we're not going to get into detail with this because this is, this gets a little too school-specific probably for this setting, and also we need to work on this a little bit, but in the audit, they do talk, they have some recommendations for improvements to our buildings. And so we are working on developing like an action plan just for the facilities part of this that we will present to the Facilities Committee in December was when we agreed to do that. And so, you know, some of that might have to be, not that, not that, I think most of it would be public, some of that might have to be an executive session for that just because it talks about some, you know, some small issues in some of our buildings. But essentially, the focus is on door locks, not doors to the outside, but internal, like to develop some improvements there. All of our doors can lock right now, but getting some better quality door systems, working on our entryways for our buildings and making those more secure. So that's something that we're working on. Another one is consistent signage for all the schools. That was a goal for this summer, and it's kind of weakening into this school year a little bit, so we're going to continue to work on signage. Another one is a training. This is, some of us have been through the training. I've been through this training. Mark has been through this training. Ron Mackey, our Transportation Director, has been through this. It's called Incident Command System. It is a training that's actually offered through FEMA. It's an online training, but it basically teaches folks in a true emergency, there's different roles, you know, someone focuses on logistics, someone focuses on communication. So, you know, there's other aspects to it, too. I'm giving it a very sort of brief overview, but we're going to be folding that training in with our administrators this year. And another one is focusing on parent unification, reunification. That happens when we, in a, you know, an emergency, if we had to move students from one building to another or to an evacuation site. We have some of these in place in our buildings, but Mark needs to help with the buildings, make it more consistent. Basically, what it is, is something that if we had to move students to another building in some sort of fast manner, it's something in a bag or a box that has, you know, ways to contact parents, you know, the homeroom classes or the attendance rosters for the classes, just some of that stuff, so everyone's not trying to pull it up on their phone or mobile device. So these are some things we're working on. That is it. I had one thought pop into my head, but then it popped right back out, so we wanted to open it up to questions.
Any questions?
Could you discuss a bit more of the Incident Command System training, who's doing that, and what, a little color on what that looks like?
It is online. It's kind of, it's like a two to three-hour module that FEMA makes available to folks. They have all these different levels. We just want to do the basic level right now, which is like the introduction to it, and it's just, I think it's like a two and a half hour training. So we're just trying to figure out a way to kind of do it in a way that respects people's time, but gets it done. Right now, I think we kind of have a working model of it with Ron, Mark and I. We just want some of our principals trained too.
How are the changes being received?
Quite well. I mean, it's, some changes are a little bit different, and it's just a matter of explaining why we're doing it. It's not, you know, any really kickback, it's until you explain it to them why, what we're doing, what we're doing. And it's been pretty good. I have been with the school, they're actually looking forward to me coming over and taking, you know, charge of little things that they used to have to be worried about on that, like with the security guards and stuff like that, and the drills on how to do them and stuff. So it's been good. I've had no, no problems with anybody.
I think, you know, I talked about, one of my goals was wanting the principals to be able to focus more on instructional leadership, which is a huge part of the job. And I think already I'm seeing, you know, like Mark liaising, liaisoning, liaising? Liaising with BPD, the Town of Fishkill PD, just on all the drills that we do. That's one less call a principal has to make to like set all of that up. I know it seems small, but like doing that for all of our buildings, having it be this really unified approach, that's just with the drills, there's a lot of other things going on with that. It's helping free our principals up a little bit. It's helping free me up a little bit to focus on other stuff. So, so that part. There was one thing that did pop into my head about visitors to buildings. You know, we've talked about, talked a little bit about having this, like, so one of the things that we want to do is we do want our buildings to have visitors. We want, we want, you know, things to happen in our buildings that parents are invited to. I think that's a really key part to everything. So Mark, we're trying, we're working with our principals and our teachers and the security monitors at each school to, when you know you have like the big event, to make a plan for it, like, so like to print out a list of the parents in the classrooms. You know, last year kindergarten where I was, we had like the ocean unit day, and all the parents got to come see the kids talk about their ocean animal. So instead of taking a really long time to check everybody in, Mark's going to work with buildings to keep things really safe and secure, but streamline that a little bit, because one of the things we found last year was we'd have an event and parents would be waiting to like check in to the event for like 20 minutes, 25 minutes, sometimes longer. Like, we don't, you know, we want to be safe, we want to be secure, so we still will do the things we need to do, but we also want to have events in buildings that parents can come see their students perform something, or their student work, or some sort of event. So having Mark in this role kind of helps with working with the security folks at each of the buildings on ways we can streamline, you know what I mean? Who's already checked in before? Can we just get a visitor sticker on those folks, or, you know what I mean? I know these seem like little things, but it's really important, because with all of this, we want, you know, we want our schools to be open and to have volunteers and to have parents be able to visit. I don't want to have like the fortress mentality. And so, so part of what we talk about a lot is things like that, like how do we, how do we keep from having the 35-minute check-in for parents who are just coming for the honor, honor roll breakfast or something at Rombaut or what have you? So he's working with principals really closely on that. Another thing that we're working on is just sort of the role of the security guard, and so that's, it's kind of evolving as we go, but when we were looking at data from last year, we had some of our security folks interacting with students over really low-level kinds of things, like dress code violations and things like that. You know, Mark's really working with the staff to have educators in the building focused on that, whether it's administrators or teachers. Our security folks are in the building to keep people safe, to work with visitors to the building, you know, to make sure areas of the building are being monitored at all times, but, but like the interactions about kind of low-level type code of conduct things, we really need the educators to, to work with the students on. And so that's something that Mark's been working with his staff on, or his shared staff with principals. So that is, that's a work in progress, you know? We're shifting that, but I think people have taken to that more readily than I thought, you know? And I think a lot of people are like, yeah, well, no, I get this, this is what I'm supposed to be doing, or, you know, those kinds of things. So that's a shift for us too. So it's, it's been a positive start.
How is the reception, or how is like the Beacon Police Department and the Town of Fishkill Police Department accepted your role? Have you reached out to them?
Yeah, yeah, I have, I've spoken to, I haven't spoken to the chief of Fishkill, but they have a liaison lieutenant there. I've been dealing with technically two different lieutenants that I deal with on different issues. Chief Ginjulis, I met, had a meeting with him, you know, once I got into this role, and he basically was told, you know, whenever, you know, I call or need something, please be accommodating. I've had to call him on a couple of different things, and they've been absolutely phenomenal working with us. So it's been a real good relationship.
Question? What aspects, so the, the new training for the drills, lockdown drills, live shooter drills, these sorts of things, what aspects of the plans are towards standardizing how to contextualize that for the students?
Standardize because if you're, I'm.
Or how are we, how are we talking about that to the students?
I think that's, that's the side of things that's more a building principal and the teachers in the building. And so, you know, it's something, you know, that conversation is a hard thing to standardize because teachers, I think, bring a little bit of themselves to that conversation. But I know for sure at the elementary level, we've talked about it as a group of principals, and I know they then talk about it with their staff, like, how do we do this in a way that helps people prepare for these, you know, potentially unfortunate events, but yet not have a child then anxious about it every day, or scared, or living in fear? And so what I found, both through my experience as a principal for a long time, and also working with principals and seeing teachers do it, is they, they, again, it's hard to make this completely consistent, but I've seen elementary teachers be really skilled at that conversation with kids about like, here's what we're going to do, let's just keep everyone safe, and we're just practicing, and I think part of our job is also reassuring parents. I know principals do a lot of that. Sometimes those calls get to me. Last year, you know, we worked on making our training, or excuse me, our drills more consistent across the schools. One of our schools was doing things a little bit differently, and so that shift caused a couple of our parents, you know, the shift was a little bit more direct, which is what we were doing in other schools, and I had a couple of parents call me with concerns about that, but we talked about the state requirements around this, we talked about what we want every teacher saying, and then, you know, the parents who called with concern said, yeah, yeah, no, my kids' teachers did all of that, I just didn't know why the shift happened. And then I explained, well, we're trying to get everybody more consistent across all the schools. At the secondary level, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Noah, but like it's, 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 again, I don't want to speak for you, but like it's something that I know high school students across our country think a lot about, because it's in the news a lot, and I don't know if you want to sort of jump in with your experiences with that. And you can pass, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I know a lot of students, they, I, from what I can tell, whenever something happens is when they talk about it. If there's an event, then they get more worried about it. Now it's just making them take it seriously. A lot of them will just go about on regular drills. So the students, there's been good communication within the past couple of weeks. I know a lot of social studies classes and some other classes, it's just about how do we talk about these events and then learn how we have to take them seriously and not just joke about the drills that we do. So I know last year was the spring, we had the new drill, we had a lockdown drill in between classes. That was the first time we did that in a high school, and that was a good drill, and the students, some students that it always happening, which was like they understood what they had to do, so that was, that was a good drill for them to see how that would all go down.
We've tried doing that because a lot of times with the drills, you know, staff, and we looks at, okay, well, we can't do it this time because this is how, we can't do it this time, this time. But when an emergency happens, it normally happens at the worst time, so we've tried to implement a little bit, a little bit of inconvenience to see what, you know, so you're drilling what, what may really happen, instead of having it at the perfect time to have a drill when everything is going along. So that's what we did, like we did it in between a lunch period or between classes or something like that, just so. And like at the elementary, we did a little bit of modify, we just went into the cafeteria and, you know, had them all quiet, and we say, listen, we're going to do a modified lockdown, we're going to see where we have to go to a safe zone right We're going to see where we have to go to a safe zone right now. So it took five minutes, but now they know, God forbid, if it does happen during a lunch period, that they'll know where to go. In the classroom, especially elementary level, I've dealt with that more on a bigger hand, is they all knew as soon as it goes, they knew, they were, you know, knew to go right there. So we've been adding that on just to try to make it, you know, do the drills a little bit better, to be more realistic, just in case something does happen in that point.
One thing I'd ask for the educator side is I've been really lucky that I've received communication from my children's teachers when they had an anxious response to a drill. And it, it didn't happen all the time. So that's why it is great to have that communication because, you know, I just got an email the end of the day, like they seemed upset, they started to panic a little bit. Particularly like, I think they went to a small room in the library and Glennum is another thing.
Yes.
And that, my older child had a reaction to that. And then I think there was like a drill in the hallway that was dark. There was something, I can't remember, but.
Oh, that last year you mean?
Yeah, it might have been.
That said shelter in place where, where they have to go outside for evac, we have to be like for a hurricane or something, that they have to go outside and the lights that are be shut off and stuff like that, right?
And so my younger child, I, I just got emails from the teachers and I really appreciated that because it's the type of thing that, you know, if you don't hear as a parent, they forget it, you forget it until the next time or something triggers them.
Right.
And you have no idea they've had this other experience that made them nervous. And I, I think that if we're separating these two roles where we're focusing on security and process, then that should free up teachers a little bit more to see like just what the response is in their classroom and if they notice something out of.
The first lockdown is an announced one with the staff and everybody so they all know, so they can prepare the kids.
Yeah.
So it's not. And I know we did a fire drill. They also, you know, the kindergarten kids, they walked them through and got them outside before they set the alarm off because it'd be the first time they were actually hearing it. So that's why we do the drill and then we start doing it. And I, you know, also, you know, requesting that immediately after the lockdown drill that a robocall go home. So when the kids go home, they know it was a drill and, and stuff like that. And we notify, again, we notify the PD, all that, so everybody knows that there's lockdown. We put up a sign in the door, drill in progress, please wait and say, somebody comes to the door and says, you know, I can't get in and, you know, the police are here. So they know the drill's in progress, please wait.
And I know when I get those messages, I never hold myself up as the model parent, but I sometimes try to check in with my son about, oh, you had a drill today. You know, just because I, I've seen some nods that you do it too. Like is it, it's like you want to sort of see how they're responding to it.
Right.
And, but it is, it's, it's a tricky thing. And I think the unannounced nature that we're required to do by New York is sometimes hard for parents, for sure.
Could you detail that a little bit? What's the requirement for unannounced drills?
The first lockdown drill is announced, then we have to do three other ones that are unannounced. Not the staff, the way the state wants it, the staff doesn't know. I mean, particular staff knows, of course, the administrator, maybe the nurse or something, but nobody else is usually, but now it's going to be coordinated between me and the administrator of setting it up. And then it's unannounced, it goes, we just, when we do the, it's, it's announced, this is a drill, this is a drill, this is a drill, lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. So it's announced as a drill once it goes over. It's not, doesn't come over. New York State requires that you announce that it's a drill, then you say lockdown. So again, and then they just, they go to.
And then how many evacuation drills do we have to do?
There's a total of eight drills by December 31st. That's counting one lockdown. And again, it can be a shelter in place drill or a fire drill. They want a lot of them drills done for evacuation purposes, God forbid something, so they know how, you know, they're, they're all accustomed to doing it. So what I'm trying to do is like quarterly, do the lockdown drill. So every quarter would be a lockdown drill. And then, then there's 12 overall. So you have eight before December 31st and you have four more after that, before the end of the year by the state requirements.
So just to reiterate, every drill begins with an announcement, this is a drill.
Yes. But other than the fire drill, it goes off. It just goes off. And they, they can be announced or unannounced again. Usually the word gets out, yeah, we're going to be having a fire drill. That usually gets out, so it's not, and, and the kids are.
It's usually on a beautiful sunny day.
Yeah, yeah, usually. So that's usually not, and we've changed them again. If it's pouring rain out, we won't do the fire drill then. You know, that we play the weather a little bit on that. It's just to get the kids accustomed of going out and where they have to go and then hearing that. Like I said, the first drill at the elementary, we got the kindergartens out first before we put the alarm. And we only put the alarm on long enough to everybody knows it and we shut it back down. So it's not constantly blaring. But, but again, it's, the elementary does great as they go through and went through up in the middle and the high school, they know. And that was one thing we had to back off from with the high school a little bit, we changed in the middle school a little bit was after Parkland of pulling the fire drill, we've now come before, elementary kids wait for the teacher's guidance. The high school, I mean, they just went from years and years, as soon as the alarm went off, they went out. So now we just have the teachers look out first, sweep the hallway, make sure there's no danger out in the hallway, then go. So it's a little bit of change.
And that's one thing I did mention in the, in the presentation is we have a district emergency response team and the Beacon Fire Chief is on this. And so he worked with us on that change. You know, that's kind of how that group works, like we sort of troubleshoot stuff as it comes up. One other thing I forgot to mention that having Mark in this role, we're going to be adding is kind of the incident review process. Like if something, if we go through some sort of emergency, like that we sort of bring all the players together a few days later to review how we responded to the emergency, how we could have done it better, sort of, you know, a process piece that Mark's going to help facilitate. So we're excited to have that part too.
As far as the anonymous tip line, just to, just to sort of build off that, is there any sort of protocol in place for things that staff, teachers, principals are supposed to notice or how that information is shared?
You, like a.
Is there any like?
I mean, things get in the building, things get reported to the principal.
Okay.
And then most often it, it goes to me. We're having a little bit of a change this year, which is great. Now it'll go to Mark and Eric as well as me. So it's going to be more of a team approach to it at my level.
Yeah, I was asking about, they're just lessons learned from previous years.
Well, Terrence had brought this up about that, doing the anonymous. And sometimes it depends on how the system is. It can be geared to if you want to say what school it's from. So it goes right to that administrator and to them instead of not to, you know, so it does if it's, if it's that type of a case.
Yeah, the anonymous reporting system, I'm sure they're all kind of similar. Like you can either check where you want it to go or if the person doesn't check, it goes to the superintendent and I farm it out kind of. And, and sometimes you have to have some brief meetings to discuss what it is and then deal with it. But, you know, it's, it's kind of collects a lot of different aspects. Like the bus stop in this area needs more monitoring or, you know, just, just all kinds of stuff comes up.
With regards to the plan for building improvements, when we had received a report initially, I remember I had jotted down some notes, there were some of the recommendations in there struck me as, you know, good recommendations, but that had the potential to change the character of some of the schools, like window mediation or window remediation, things like that. So I just wondered, will we have the opportunity to review the plan for building improvements before it happens?
Yes, that's, that's a high board involvement sort of thing. So that would be a facilities committee process.
Right.
And so, you know, I think I can safely say that the board would be signing off on any of that before a change happened.
And we've been talking about that at facilities. Oh, okay. Also, I think what Mark has been saying too, is that we don't want to reveal too much about.
Right.
Like some of the structural changes, but if you're curious about it or where we get to that phase, you should come to that committee.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, any, any sort of change like that would be a board approved.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We appreciate it. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
All right. In reviewing the agenda, we do not have any corrections that I noted. Does anybody have anything on the agenda that they felt needed to be corrected? Seeing none, we're going to accept the agenda as it is. Do we have any student or school presentations? Seeing none, do we have any parent groups? Seeing none, no one signed up for open to the public, but would anybody like to address the board during public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to the superintendent's report.
So I just have a really quick update and Noah, you might be talking about this too, but before our next board meeting, we are going to have sort of a different thing at the high school. We're going to have homecoming. And so we are going to have a soccer game and a football game under some temporary lights. So I can't remember the exact times, it's on Friday, October 5th. And I know the football game's at 6:30, I want to say soccer's at 4:00. So the, the lights are, can be temporarily brought in and it is being paid for through, with donations to the activity fund for the football team. And so it's, it's, it's kind of an exciting attempt for us to see what it's like. And we're going to have a homecoming dance that night and a parade. And, and so we're just excited about it. Something that we haven't done here, I think, in a while. And, and we think it's just a really good way to, to bring the high school community together. And I wanted to share it in my superintendent's report to invite the larger community to be a part of that night too. So I think the parade is just, we're walking around the track of the, of the field. So you can watch the parade from a nice bleacher seat under the lights. Oh, there's going to be a barbecue too, right? A tailgate kind of thing? So we have all kinds of stuff going on. So I just wanted to say, you know, it's donations that are funding the temporary lights, but this is a great shift for the high school. John Giometta and Elisa Soto have been working on this a lot, probably with a lot of other people. But just wanted to take my moment to invite the whole community out that night to be a part of the new homecoming tradition.
Is there information on the website about the timing if people are?
If, I'll check. If there's not, we'll put it up there.
Thank you very much. All right, committee reports including board comments. Noah?
All right, I'll start off with what I was just talking about. So the, yeah, the homecoming is on a Friday night, which is the first time we've had on a Friday night. And I can't remember till when, which is good because a lot of the teams, some teams have competitions on Saturday and they have, you know, marched in the past. So now we'll have all of the teams at a homecoming. Instead of leaving after school on Friday, all of the kids will probably go to the soccer game, which will be good. So there'll be a lot of student support in both soccer and football game following that day. I know they're doing, instead of just a home king, homecoming queen and king this year, it's for each grade level. So I think it starts all the way down at like Duke and Duchess and they have Prince and Princess. It goes all the way up the ladder. Some of my other things we had is the high school was selected to participate in the 2018 All-State Disma Conference. On September 20th, we had open house here at the high school. Me and Nadine were there. We talked to a lot of the students, walked in, new dive curators, and just told them what we do and if they had any questions, they could see us. Some parents talked to us. Beacon's National Honor Society was also there. The students were scattered around the high school, helping parents find their way. Also, National Society is 10 students from National Honor Society and National Junior Honor Society from Brown Bell went to Stanford, Connecticut on September 20th for a leadership summit. That's the first time National Society went to a summit in over 10 years. And then we have, in the high school, we have a current senior who is a National Merit Scholarship finalist. That National Merit Scholarship is something you do sort of PSAT. So that's a big deal. It's, it's all around the country. So we're really happy to have that finalist. And finally, we talked about NABEANS a little bit at the end of last year. We're going to have our guidance counselors. They started today and they'll be going into classes tomorrow as well, going over NABEANS and college admissions with all of the senior classes. So I know a lot of students have been a little unsure about NABEANS and it's connected to a common application now. So we're hoping that will clear up a little bit.
Good job, Noah. So is it helping you determine where you're going to go to school next year?
It's, it's been helped on the deadlines, I'd say. Each college is a little bit different, so that part has been helpful in the writing assignments. So, yeah, that's been good.
Very good. Have you decided where you're going yet?
Not yet.
Any choices?
I'm looking at, I have some smaller colleges. There's one, Belmont, that was outside of Charlotte. Norizdo, which is right outside Lancaster in Pennsylvania. And then a few bigger ones, UCF, where my brother went too, in Penn State.
For the future, you can always refuse to answer a question. Just saying, that's a nightmare.
So I should stop my questioning then? I was going to ask, do you know what you want to study?
I would have been in tears if that were.
Yeah, I know, I'm just already, I'm already starting to cry as that. I don't even.
Probably business. I handle, I do a lot in that realm already, so that seems a reasonable fit.
Great. Thank you. I'm sorry I put you on the hot side.
I'm just really glad you didn't ask about homecoming dates or anything.
Craig?
Okay. We, several of us were members, took a tour of two of our buildings today. We're trying to get around all of them. Eventually we started with Forestall and the high school, which are two of the more mold prone buildings, as you've been informed. And there's a lot of activity going on and it's going to create some expense and we'll be dealing with that later in the agenda. Unscheduled expenses for specialists who come in to do remediation. But we're going to have to do it and I'm pleased that we jumped on it as quickly as we have. And it's not just our problem, obviously. It's, read it in the papers, a lot of schools are having the same problem and you may be having it at your home. If you don't look in the dirty little corners and see something growing there, it still may grow whether you're looking at it or not. It's just been extremely humid and welcome to the Hudson Valley humidity. We're famous for that and boy, are we really paying for it now. We have meetings coming up for the new public relations advocacy and legislative. And I'll be preparing an agenda for that. And I'll just leave it at that for now and say, thanks for the homecoming. And that's a great thing to get back to.
Craig, what was the date for the PR advocacy legislative committee?
I think we're doing that this Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, 26.
Is there another committee meeting that same night? The.
Policy.
Policy. Policy's at 8:15.
Yeah, I think we're at 7:00.
Okay. Laura?
Yeah, I, I never know how close to it is thing. So, yeah, I was part of the tour and I was really impressed with the care and the thoroughness that's being, being put into the cleanup. So that was good to see. Just want to say that I will be running or helping to run the PTO collab table at the Spirit of Beacon Day this weekend. I hope that people come out. I am going to be selling ice pops and water. This is part of a larger fundraising effort toward these discount cards that we're going to be selling at schools in the district. It's basically pure profit for the schools, which is great. We have 15 businesses on board, including Key Food and Bounce and Tracks and a lot of really good stuff. So I hope that people will come out and I also hope that when the cards get to your schools, that you'll all buy them and help support your school's PTO, PTA. In terms of committee work, I know the wellness committee is meeting on Wednesday, so I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to our first meeting. And that's all I've got for you.
Laura, how much are the cards?
Well, it's, it's really up to the schools, but last year, the ones that Sergeant did were sold for 10 and that seems like a good number. Exactly. Exactly, there it is right there.
Is it gonna be one card or is it going to be?
It's one card to rule them all.
Cool.
Yeah, so each school gets the same card.
Oh, great.
Yeah. And it'll have the PTO collab logo on the front with all the schools' names, so yeah.
Thank you. Melissa?
I have no comment tonight, thanks.
Mike?
Okay, so I was really happy to hear the presentation on the security efforts that have been taken over the summer and also, you know, going forward. And it's clear that having Mark as the, you know, the head in security really helps the consistency across the district. And that's really important when you get into, you know, the, the flashcards and the, you know, and the procedures and the training and the, you know, no matter what, no matter what school building you go to, you're gonna get, you're gonna have to do the same thing. So it's, it's really important, especially when you're talking about emergency planning. So, so I'm really happy to, to hear that. Happy to hear about homecoming and get a view of what it's gonna feel like to have nighttime games. That's really exciting, cause you know, a year from now, we'll be doing that out, you know, behind the, the high school. So that's really, that's, I'm really happy to hear that. Before I go to the facilities committee, we said there's no student presentations. I remember years ago, where the board, at the board meetings, there were like, you know, student presentation, whether it's a, a band or, or a poetry reading or some things like that. And just consideration for future, if there's any, yes, it gets us and the community to see some of the, some of the good things going on, so.
That's a great idea. We're working on some future VRVs, having more involvement like that.
Also, we had the tour today, so I was really happy with the quick response and the communications regarding mold issues, so it was good to get a jump out. I was happy to have got a jump out on top of that. For the facilities and committee, we met on September 12th. Some of the things on the Capitol project, the, as you know, our construction documents were all submitted and they were submitted to, and I said, for expedited review back in August. There's been comments given back already to our architects and they're addressing those comments. The construction manager is working on the, the estimate, so goes through the estimate. They do some, you know, more detail to make sure we have a really good estimate going into this. Because, you know, I think, because of the good, good economy, things, you know, labor is a little more expensive, so they're going back and, and looking at the values of all the different estimates and hopefully get it back into the, into the box. But we'll work through that in the facilities committee. But we are on, on track for getting the re, you know, the approvals, probably November, maybe December, but we're, it's a good track to go out for bids and support, really January, February, go out for bids, which is early. That's very good, to get good quality bidders and a good price. So everything's going well. Some of the other things, just so you know, we talked about the facilities committee. For example, Craig brought up, you know, possibilities of what if we had solar parking spaces, you know, covering over your parking spaces, we get solar energy and also protects your car from the, from the weather. So some of those other things were, were, we are talking about, and Kristen's gonna talk about some other things in her report, I think. The next meeting is scheduled for October 10th at 7:00 PM. That's all I have.
Thank you. James?
Yes. I also, I wanna thank Matt and Mark for their presentation of security. It's something that I followed very closely. For as much as it is so essential that we tighten up the security and follow the audit, it's something that I think strikes all of us as parents and members of the community so poignantly. Many parents, myself included, are also concerned about the other side of it, is like, how do we make, make our facilities safer while also making our children feel safe and not traumatizing them in the process? I'm really excited and encouraged to hear from the board. It seems like that's something that's being taken very seriously as we also update our schools' facilities. And along with that is also the restructuring of the security staff and focusing on securing the buildings and trying new de-escalation techniques with the students. I'm just really excited to see us moving that direction. I think it'll make the whole place better for students. For the policy committee, we have a, a meeting coming up this Wednesday at 8:15. We're discussing a few policies, including a revision of our sexual harassment policy, policy zero, one, one zero. Public complaints protocol, and I know it's meetings, but I think most significantly we're gonna have a discussion about homeschool students in the community and their access to extracurricular activities. That meeting is open to the public and it's at 8:15 on Wednesday at the district office.
Great, thank you. Anthony?
Good evening, thank you. So I, I brought the ambulance over, the tow truck over to Glum. So that was, that was fun. Our fridge ran out of batteries, so we had to legally recharge it up and stuff. But also, I was able to catch the tail end of the South Avenue PTO meeting, so it seemed like they're very active and it was a very good meeting there.
It's a good year.
And I paid my 10 bucks for my membership there, too, so. October 2nd is the, the date that three out of the four members of the diversity committee could make, so I'm gonna peg that October 2nd at 8:15 for the diversity committee meeting. I also want to mention that the, the property that's next to us, the, the former Beacon Correction Facility, the RFP, has gone out now. And proposals are due December 20th, 2018. If the board members last year, you know, we, I guess we had varying interest in it. Some of us did, some of us did not. And from a conference call, if there was a, something that we wanted, a property that we should've asked for it before went out to RFP, so I'm thinking that at this point, we're, we're not interested in that property, but maybe interested to see what happens to it. I don't know how much we can control that. We're not on that, we're not on the board that's deciding who gets awarded. It's the elected officials and some folks on the entire state that the school was included in that board. So, so just keep an eye on that. Also, on the 9th of October, I'd like to attend the board meeting remotely. I'll be in DC for the week at, taking a FEMA course at their headquarters in DC for work. So, you know, I can pass on the information, I just need the, whatever software you're using to do that.
What we did in the past was through your district email, there is a chat option or Skype option.
Okay, Google.
So we would just, what we would need is when we advertise the meeting, we just need the location of where you're going to be at, so we could publicize that at the same time that we publicize the meeting, in case someone wanted to attend where you were attending. So we've done this before, so it's not something that we're, it's new to us, so we definitely do that. We just need that information. We put you up on the big screen.
Okay.
And you'd be able to.
So I don't, I don't check in till Monday night, though, so I don't know if I have a room, but I do have a hotel.
Yeah, as long as we have a physical location of where you're gonna be.
I'll put a sign up a lot of times.
It might attract some people.
Eight fifteen, yes. Thank you. Kristen?
Yes, um, thank you. Yeah, I, this was really great to have the security presentation and see how it's all coming together and being implemented in the schools. I think one of the most compelling things was the idea of having simple instructions readily available to sort of move people quickly past a panic factor if something should happen. And also just communication, because I always think we think about things we see in the news, but I don't think any of us predicted five tornadoes last May. And that certainly threw us off our loop. And it's great to know that there's protocols in place that will allow people to be able to, you know, find things out, will know where buses are, the key players will be able to talk to each other. Related to what Mike was discussing, we'll be sending some representatives, most likely myself and maybe somebody else from the district, to an event at the Omega Institute called Project Drawdown. It's about reducing carbon footprint and, you know, implementing strategies to reverse climate change. There, there will be two schools presenting case studies of things they have done to significantly reduce their, their carbon footprint. It's being driven by somebody named Paul Hawken of the Hawken Institute. You'd be familiar with his name, from the Brandon Smith and Hawken. He sold that and now he's spending his remaining days working on this issue. And he was looking for, they were looking for a local school, school partner close to Omega, so we're going to try to be that partner. We, we're also looking to access a consultant at NoCost who can come and look at our schools and our processes and systems and start to point us in the direction of things that might be possible for us. My other goal with this is that we may be able to find some partners so that we can figure out if there's grant opportunities, so that we can see if we can have money brought in to help us do this rather than just wait for capital projects and put any burdens on taxpayers. I'd like to, to propose the idea that we have a board of ed representatives at the learning differences support group. And I'm happy to be that person. Part of those came up for me because I've been noticing sort of back and forth on social media, the idea of people asking for a special ed PTA, which exists at other schools. The people who have been very involved with the learning differences group are saying, we're doing that, we just don't have support and, and we need more people involved. As a parent of a special ed child, I think that this is, this is something that we need to kind of, and also as a board member truly, because it's something we need to figure out how to communicate with people, bring them in on processes quickly. I feel like I often get the same questions from people over and over again. And it's, I think it's, you know, as somebody who was very involved in the PTA, who was on a board, on the board, then once my child was diagnosed, I felt like I was starting from, you know, square one again. And so I, I felt like I had to learn a lot, pull new language, figure out a way to access services and, and most importantly, information and other people. So I know what comes, this also impacts us because around budget season, we get a big, you know, presentation from PPS. And I think it's important to develop a better understanding of the work that's being done there, how we can move resources to support it and also figure out ways to bring this population more into the school than maybe feeling sort of outside of it. And I, I would definitely be the representative, I would be happy to be the representative. I think it would also, if people wanted to rotate in, I just think it would be a good thing. Apparently they do presentations and information sharing and so that's it. Well, I'm just proposing it for, we can talk about it in the, if you want, should I make an emotion or?
Not yet.
No, I thought, I mean, I didn't feel like it was something we had to vote on, or do we have to vote as committees? I didn't think it was, it's not really a committee, that's from the board.
We're sending a board as a, you're going as a board rep, you're not going as a parent, I'm understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I plan to attend as a parent sometimes, but I just started to think about this is, this is part, this is a piece of the budget we end up voting on. And I always, I felt like I didn't have a real understanding of how all these components fit together until I was accessing those services.
So you give updates to, to, updates to the board?
I could do that, yeah. I would, would you, I could just go and give updates to the board or check in with the people who.
Well, what we could do is add their unfinished business, you can make a motion to add items to the agenda.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll walk you through it from there.
Okay.
I also was really encouraged to hear the security update, thank you very much. And I thought it was great to talk about the need to balance security and, you know, increasing organization and everything with a welcoming attitude. I think that's really important to keep students and parents and, and community feeling welcome in our schools, because I think that actually makes our schools more secure as well. I attended the curriculum meeting last week and it was a really exciting meeting. We, first we got an update about the new classes that we added at the high school. There are five new courses, art, lab skills, guitar, AP science and field biology. And I'm happy to report that all those classes ran and they all had enough students to, to run according to board policy. It's, I think it's 12 students is the minimum, so they all had at least 12, most of them more than 12. Actually, AP science, we really need to consider adding another section because it has 29 kids in it, which is an awfully big class. So that's a really big success story. The other thing we talked about is the grants that we've received and how we're beginning to implement them into the curriculum. The Well-Runed Schools Grant, there, there's a jump posting for a Mandarin teacher so that we can begin to build our second world language. I don't think there's, I don't know how far in the process we are with that. But we are talking about adding two new AP courses for the, for next full year, 1920 full year. The fourth grade music is in process of expanding. We have hired the part-time music teacher and.
Full-time.
Full-time, so. Oh, is it full-time? I was a .6.
Full-time.
Full-time. And I think, but starting in October, fourth grade band will commence. And that includes instruments as well, so that's really great. Inter, library and media is also changing and Dr. Lynn also talked about that some. I was excited, maybe I had been told this, but I missed it, but there are 3D printers at, at every school at this point. And the library and media teachers are really talking about how to incorporate their teaching with the science programming that's going on at the elementary level right now. So that seems like a really good use of their time. I, I think there's room to look at the social studies curriculum, too, there, I'm sure there'll be a need like that. There was more. Oh, and then there's this other grant that, that we received, the Title II grant for another $118,000. And this is going to be a partnership, is a partnership between our district and Clarkson University with the math and science programs at the middle and high school. And this is really exciting, so it was really talking about, a little bit what Jonathan Costa mentioned about really changing the approach to teaching, so it's more of an, it's inquiry-based teaching. I don't know if anyone remembers, but when he spoke, he talked about, he put up the, the same lesson, basically taught two different ways. And that's really what this is talking about. And so most of this money is going into professional development for teachers, but also for leadership, so that leadership can support the teachers. And there weren't, there weren't that many teachers at the meeting, but the teachers made it very clear that they were very excited about this, but also really, it was a big change for them. It was not the way they learned to teach and so they really need that support to do it well. And luckily, there's a five-year endowment to support professional development in our district, so we'll be using that for this as well. We talked also about this summer institute, next summer, which will be additional professional development for teachers. And, and then the rest of the time, we sort of talked, we just, we spitballed, I guess, some ideas about other goals that we could try to achieve this year in terms of, I talked about, you know, things like a reading, summer reading program. We talked about things, support that did exist in the district a while back in terms of math and reading support over the summer. And, but we're gonna, the other thing that came up is, did we really have all the right people in the room to talk about that? So that is, that's the next piece to put together. But it was a great meeting, thanks a lot, Eric. Thanks to Cecilia, who's not here. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is Jonathan Costa mentioned most of the communication with the community going through this thought exchange program for the strategic plan. And I, I really think we need to build in at least one, or maybe it's through the PTA, PTO meetings, but community, in-person community conversation for a strategic plan.
Yeah, we, we're adding that to the work plan, at least. We kind of left that part a little bit.
Yeah.
So we'll be doing various meetings.
Oh, and the next Duchess County School Board meeting is not until October 4th. If anyone wants to join me, because I know I'm happy to drive. And that's it.
I have no comments for tonight.
Can I jump in with one more question? Did we decide on Spirit of Beacon Day what our participants will be, or is that a conversation for later?
We left it up to Kelly.
I wanna know where I wanna, where I need to be. Get out the coin, Kelly.
I would say the truth, Kelly.
I just wondered where we need to be to line up for.
You're making brownies?
I need to bring the brownies.
You can always bring the brownies. You can always bring the brownies. There's gonna be a booth in, in the board docs. I believe Kelly shared with us.
Our location.
In the superintendent's report section.
Okay.
It has, where the, we'll have a table with some giveaway that Kelly's gonna pick out and you can place your brownies there if you want.
Okay.
And the, you line up by Louis Tompkins' host. They'll, if you tell them where you are, there will be someone there to put you in, in order.
Okay. And, ah, there it is, thank you.
I'm waiting for it to tell, but do we need to volunteer?
I'm waiting for it to tell, but do we need to volunteer to know who's gonna staff the booth?
Just, if you're attending, just please let us know so they can plan appropriately. So, are you attending?
Yes.
Mike, are you attending?
No.
James?
Hi. I can only march.
Laura?
I'll be with the call down table.
That's right, trader.
Trader.
I'm standing in March eight.
Okay. I will be able to maybe stop by for a brief second, but count me as a no.
Who's count, I thought you were writing this down.
I got it. Yes, no, yes, marching.
You're like, count me as no.
Yes. Right, no, trader, marching, and yes. So I have it. All right, we have unfinished business. So we put on the agenda tonight to discuss, and I want to have a conversation about the schedule to follow up with the initial board retreat that we had to do workshops about goal development for, for ourselves. So I would like to kind of address this sooner rather than later. So I have two, three actually options that I wanted to present to go with, and then make a decision based on those options, or if you have other options, we could go from there. One is what we've done in the past is we could start with a workshop at six o'clock and go from six to seven. That would, I would say, be option one, because that's something we did in the past. Option two, I would say, is we could start at 6:30 and have the board meeting start a half hour later and go to, and go to 7:30 so we can have the workshop then. Or we can advertise that we will do the workshop at the end of the meeting as well. So it's a public, it's a public workshop, so it's done in front of the public. It's not about the communication of the board, it's really about the goals that we're developing, so it's a working meeting workshop. So those are the three options that I was thinking of, start at six, go to seven, start a board meeting at regular time at seven, start at 6:30, push the board meeting back a half hour, and go to seven, 7:30, or have a regular board meeting and then go and have an hour after the regular board meeting to have that workshop piece. Feedback.
Question. In the past, how many, or do we have any sense of how many workshops we require to finish this?
Well, I'm going to be optimistic, because we've been through this. As a board, most of us have been through it with developing the goals. So I think that we can, we have a working framework with our existing goals that we could adjust and modify and not create brand-new ones unless we want to create a brand-new one. So I'm hoping that two workshops would get it done, so we have something in November that we could start publicizing as to, this is the board goal aspect. I know Matt could be a little bit more involved this year because he has a better understanding of the district and, you know, where he sees the vision going. And next year will be really easy because the strategic plan will be done. And so that will help, that will help direct the board goals so much more. But because that strategic plan isn't completed yet, it's just gonna be a little bit as to, hey, what do we feel is important at this time? How is it lining to the work that the district, that we have going on with the district? And how we can make them a little bit more measurable than they are now and streamline them, I think. So I, I'm optimistic that we could do it in two working sessions if after the first one, we do a little homework and start compiling some of the information, and then come back to the second one with close to being ready to finalize draft. And maybe then we would be able to do an addendum to the agenda that night, this is being real optimistic, do an addendum to the agenda and add, you know, a resolution of the support that the board supports, the goals and support. But then I think actually having the two workshops, if the public saw, viewed and came to the workshop for the first time that we did, if they had any inputs as to what we wanted to consider, we could get it out there so they can come and present at the public comment section for that meeting to say, hey, it went well. Or it really depends on when we have that workshop piece. So instead of having another night where we all have to come together, I was looking at those three options, but I needed feedback.
I'd like to have it maybe gaining on the meetings, I think then the public will be, you know, more able, you can either come and listen or it's early later in the, in the day. And so I would say 6:30, 7:30, because some people have to travel home from work time, like start reasonable time, that's what I would go for.
I agree. Yeah, I like 6:30.
Great. I see a lot of people shaking their heads.
Yes.
6:30, 7:30, it's good?
And would we not have a workshop, like a, or there would also be a workshop?
There would also be a workshop during the regular board meeting. I know through agenda setting, Matt and I were talking about having the principals start coming to present to the board as well. So that's the, I think it's important starting earlier or staying later, because it does tend to get training after a full day work coming, and then you're gonna be putting on, in a lot of thought effort into the workshop, and then a lot of listening skills for the presentations that we have for the board meeting. So I'm seeing a lot of non-Antony.
I don't know, so. I have to look, my work, if work will let me out a little early, so I don't know yet.
Okay.
But the consensus seems to be that starts.
6:30 to 7:30, I'm seeing a lot of non-shaking, so we'll do.
I have a question though.
Sure.
I think Matt had suggested that it would be just us, it would be also some administrators in, like, maybe make a circle or something. Are we still doing that plan or are we just doing the board?
I think for the workshop for the board goals, I think he was talking more additional goals when we were speaking that.
Yeah, and that was a little bit before this strategic plan process kind of develops, which I think will have a lot of input from a lot of different people, so I think it would make sense just to focus on board goals now.
Okay. So when I do the agenda setting with Matt, I will, we'll have it that we'll start with the workshop at 6:30 to 7:30 to address board goals. What I will do is I'll try and send everybody an electronic version of our old goals, so you can see each category, and it would be easy to edit if you wanted to do some revisions to what we had, and we can go from there. And if you add something that you want to add new, you know, we can do that as well. So I'm hearing consensus 6:30, 7:30. All right. Now Kristen, you want to make a motion to add an agenda to item, add an item to the agenda?
Motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
Kristen, a second for Anthony. Comments or questions? All those in favor of adding item to the agenda?
I agree.
All right. Posed, motion carried, nine, zero. Okay. Kristen, why don't you discuss what that item is and?
I'd like to designate a board member to be representative at the learning differences support group meetings. And for the purpose of developing a better understanding of the work they're doing, how it can fit within the work the board does in funding and providing resources, and evaluating the resources we are supporting to that population of students.
Any other comments, or anybody have any concern with adding a board rep to the learning differences group?
I have a little, just, I have no concern at all, but I'm not very familiar with the group. Could you like talk a little bit about what they do?
Well, it's mostly for, I wish I could, I actually haven't been to a meeting directly. I usually get my information secondhand from another parent, because all the time, but.
Hold on, Kristen.
Julie's so scared.
Would you like, would you mind speaking about it?
Thanks. I was hoping she'd like.
Thank you first of all for impromptu.
Yeah, sorry for the interruptions. I spend my time here freely. So the learning differences committee has evolved, I think it was the IEP 504 committee, which started off as a support group to our families with students with disabilities. Over the past year, it has evolved to really address not only the needs of the families in terms of how to best support and understand the needs of their kids, but also learning about what are the resources that are available in the school district, within each building, and beyond the district, so county services and all that jazz. So what we've been able to do as the PPS department is provide support to the committee, which is not a, it's not a PPS committee at all, it's not from the department. But the chairs of that committee share information with us about interests, the topics that the parents are interested in learning about, and we either provide our own experts or professional, our psychologists or our related service providers come to the meeting and share information, answer questions about either the related service models and how those are delivered in the building, what it all entails. We've done presentations with county representatives about transition planning beyond the 18 to 21 population of young adults with disabilities. So the PPS department has, you know, works in tandem with that group of parents to share information. So we attend the meetings, Don Candel, the director, and myself go to the meetings and we kind of flip-flop. So it's a really good resource for families who are not sure how to navigate the system. And that's one of our goals this year as a PPS department, is to also build our public support. So we're working on our, on the website, we're trying to, you know, beef up the information that's there, put some current information up there in terms of what the IEP process, the 504 process is in the district, and trying to communicate with parents to what that looks like. So that group has been instrumental in giving us feedback about what it is that we need to do on our end to make sure parents are informed about the process. So that's what it does, in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Then on the board, what ends up happening during budget season is PPS comes and does a presentation, and we, you know, have to evaluate the resources that we're going to supply to them and how we, and looking at, you know, the student population that's served. And I think that one of the reasons to sort of link up the ongoing work is because I find we only really think about it once a year when we get that presentation, and it would be helpful to sort of think about that population in a more consistent way. I don't, in my personal experience, it's not that I don't utilize a lot of services, but one of the things I realized is even if you, even if you're only accessing this in a, in, you know, not like an out district placement or, you know, sort of long-term planning post 21, there's, it just feels like you always are, you know, seeking information, looking to connect, and other districts do have special ed PTAs. I just know that that started to become kind of a push, and then the people who have been regularly doing this were, were feeling a little concerned that everything would sort of pull apart and be more divided, so I think it'd be good to kind of unify it in a more consistent or vertically integrated way.
Right. So one of the very last things that we, we discussed with the last, before the end of the school year last year with the, with the group was, they were getting a lot of questions from other families who had children who learned differently, who are not classified through the IEP process. And so their idea was how do we become more of a resource to the community beyond the identified students, which is why they changed their name. It was sort of an identity crisis, how do we support people who are not sure how to get support both within the district and beyond the district? So I think that that's, that was a move that, just in conversation with our related service and feedback from our families who have gone through the processes, where do we find information? And our, one of our responsibilities as a district and as a department is to provide that outlet and support to families. And this is one way that we do is we provide the resources, whether it's human or material professional resources, to the group as a whole. So with that, I have to run.
I mean, I just also want to add my endorsement. I actually had attended some of the meetings, that one used to be called the IEP 504 Parent Support Group, and there were things that I had learned that I didn't realize that it was available. So it's definitely a great venue for learning how to help your child.
Do you have any thoughts about it as a PPS person? I mean, do you guys do it a certain way in your district?
We call it CPAC, Special Parent Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Because to be a SEPTA, you need to have 25 regular members.
Uh-huh.
And if you don't have the consistency of having 25 regular members, you can't be a SEPTA.
Yeah.
So we do a CPAC, and it's a, it's monthly meetings, and we set up an agenda at the beginning of the year and so forth. So it's very similar to what goes on here.
Do you have somebody from the board come, or is that, is that helpful?
Um, we have various people attend, it doesn't have to, we, we call it a special ed parent advisory committee, however, it's for anybody, so we advertise it, we put it in every school building newsletter in case, because we, we put in RTI interventions as well, so we'll put an RTI twist to it, and it's really just a.
Wait one second. Does anybody, is already know that that's response to interventions? That's like if your child is flagged for, you know, just to get some extra support, it's called response intervention, RTI. I just know that that's one thing I've learned, is there's a lot of acronyms.
There are. So we just try and advertise it and get it out. Do we have a regular board rep, or we don't have a regular board rep for it? But I don't see an issue with it.
Okay.
I think I would welcome it because it would help give me an avenue to get resources for, for my department, so.
I don't want to add an extra layer, it's just something I can see, so that's fine.
Nope. All right, so we need a motion to add a committee, the learning diversity, differences committee to, to have a rep there, and having it be Kristen. Are you guys okay with having it be Kristen as the committee rep?
Yes, yeah.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to have a committee, a board rep attend the learning differences committee, and I propose that it be Kristen. Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony, Amy White, and Anthony. Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine, no. Congratulations, Kristen.
Sorry, I had time to the agenda.
That was fine, I was being sincere with the.
No, no, I know, that's, I didn't feel like it was insincere, I just realized I'm, that's a big piece of your business, we just put on.
All right, the consent agenda. The use of a consent agenda permits the board of education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there any item from the consent agenda that a board member would like pull?
12.04 ECHO.
Any other items? Hearing no other items, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, 12.01 through 12.11 minus 12.04E and 12.07.
So moved.
Is there a second, Meredith? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, nine, zero. I need a motion for agenda item 12.04E.
Motion for 12.04 ECHO instructional personnel list.
Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Meredith, comments or questions?
This has, my, my question is, this has to do with the Clean Data Trainer Stipend? And it lists the, you know, the number of, the list of people, but it doesn't have any kind of limit to the number of hours that this will evolve? Do you provide more detail on that?
Mr. Ray, could you speak to Clean Data Training? Do they have a limit to the hours they can work?
Actually, they do not. The reason, reason being is that, what happens is that they are called upon, you know, extensively throughout the course of the year, because they are, they have to support teachers that maybe have trouble in their, their grade book or, or working with power school, especially a lot of our new teachers.
Is there, is there a difficult amount of time, is one of the limits of the stipend, you know, that what the total cost might be estimated at?
They're probably working about, about four to five hours, no, yeah, about between five and eight hours a month. They're holding a couple of sessions before school monthly, a couple of sessions after school monthly.
And that's for each person, would be, spending that much time per month?
Yes, because pretty much they're, they're in the different schools.
Is it more at the secondary level than elementary, or is it pretty much the same?
It's probably more at the elementary, more at the elementary level.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to get an idea about what the total cost is going to, you know, potentially be, because there's no limit on it.
I don't believe it was significant last year. I mean, it was a smaller amount, so some months they may not need any at all, and other months depending upon, you know, they need assistance. months, depending upon, you know, they need assistance with the computer.
Right. Where it gets heavy is around grading times, like the end of a quarter, and that's because sometimes there are errors that are caught, and then they really have to spend a lot of time supporting the teachers at that point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried, nine, oh. Any motion for 12.07?
Just, I just want to jump in, we can, we can pull something together, show you what we spent last year, to give you a sense.
Okay. That would be, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Any motion for 12.07?
Motion approved, 12.07. It was really the, the clean audit from 9/11 is the one question I have on there. All right, all those, I need a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
My question is on page two. Let's see, the check number is 29555. It was, it looks like Duchess County Department of Social Services, $50,000. Explain what this expense is for.
We, the district is responsible for a percentage if we have a resident student in a placement at a district, so that actually was for two different payments, but it's a percentage of the, for the room and board maintenance that we have to pay. Duchess County pays it, and then they bill back the district. So it was 20%, I think it's actually a little bit more than that now. So we get a backfilling from Duchess County Department of Social Services, so.
Is that the, the main, like, physical maintenance of the facility?
It's the room and board portion, right. It's part of the residential piece of the student in a placement.
Okay.
It's not the whole thing, but it, but it is, you know, the district is responsible for some of it, it's, it's something that, you know, we kind of anticipate in the budget process, we know.
Right, so it's a budget to line item, it just, and I understand where it goes to now.
And, and Marie, the aid on that is?
Off the top of my head, you're gonna kill me. We get aid back on it, I mean, the special ed and the private part.
Residential student?
Mm-hmm.
100% able. So we get all that back.
Okay.
With residential students, you get 100% aid back from that.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried, nine, zero. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, followed by a short retreat of the board, and the board is not expected to take action after the executive session.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried, nine, zero. All right, Kelly, I'll leave, Nellie tomorrow?